It was, he was truly delighted to see the camp. Same camp instructors he knew from before care and the transition was so easy for him to be in such a familiar setting at the Bear Valley School. Ninety-six kids enrolled in Camp Bear Valley this last summer and enjoyed field trips, time outside, fun activities with one another. And in our short time at Bear Valley, our now fifth grader has created strong friendships with other students. He's thriving in academics and we've been able to witness the community bonds and connections he is quickly creating. Our first grader is learning the ropes of school life, thriving and exceeding proficient level for his grade level. And we are happily meeting parents of students he is becoming friends with. I urge you to consider our story as just one of many happy thriving student stories at Bear Valley Elementary. The Bear Valley community is unique and the SAC program is one of a kind and vital to families. It would be a terrible loss to close this school and end all the positive and impactful things Bear Valley Elementary brings to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next two testifiers are Brian Malta and Ashley Martin. Welcome, Ashley. You have three minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Okay. My name's Ashley Martin. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me this opportunity to provide testimony again. I want to again share how I do not support the closure of Bear Valley Elementary School. The Anchorage School District has made a lot of changes over the past two years. First, ASD started late start Monday. My husband and I both work full-time jobs. School starting at 10:00 AM rather than 9:00 AM is a big jump, especially when juggling two work schedules. We enrolled our children in the BBCA School Age Childcare Program at Bear Valley, allowing them to attend before school care. Then, this year, ASD changed school start times, but that's okay. We can adjust to this by enrolling them in the after-school care. And I changed my work start time to later in the day. This was another change that impacted working families, but we made it work. I'm a licensed professional counselor and currently work as a clinical director at a local nonprofit. I lead a team of clinicians who provide behavioral health services to those individuals in our community who are homeless or at risk of experiencing homelessness. My team and I provide our services in four of the local shelters in town. I would say that homelessness is a big problem in our local community currently, and I believe I hold an important job. I am helping connect these individuals to behavioral health services. I believe I am part of positive change in our community. The only reason I'm able to do this work and provide the services that I do is because my children are in the after-school care program at Bear Valley. If you close Bear Valley, my children will be rezoned to Rabbit Creek Elementary. I have reached out to them. Their after-school care program is currently full and has an 11-person waitlist. Their program also costs more money than Bear Valley's after-school program. Next year, I doubt I would be able to get my children into this program due to the already existing waitlist and me having three children who are elementary school-aged. I expect that my three children would be put on a waitlist with me and my husband scrambling to find a way for us to work when our children will be out of school at 2:30 PM. I am unable to continue to work making positive change in our local community if my children are unable to be in after-school care. This would impact not only my family, our income, but the larger Anchorage community. I am just one family and this is just one part of the impact that closing Bear Valley would have on the whole Anchorage community. I imagine there are a lot of other similar parents doing important work in our community that would be negatively impacted by this school closure. And lastly, I'm providing you with a petition that was started shortly after the news broke about the proposed closure of Bear Valley. As of yesterday, we have 695 community members who are against the closing of this school. And again, please do not close Bear Valley. If you do, you will be making the wrong choice that will hurt my family and others.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next two testifiers are Julie Fogey and Heather Woolrich. Welcome, Julie. You have three minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. I am Julie Fogey and today I just want to talk about special education for these schools. Because I am the Chair of the Special Education Advisory Council for our district. And I'm also a parent of a child with special needs at Bear Valley Elementary. So I'm speaking today as a parent at Bear Valley because that's what I know best. But I also just want to make sure that we're taking into consideration the special education teachers and paras and students and families that would be impacted by any sort of closure. So I can say at Bear Valley, we have two full-time resource teachers and a fully-staffed department, which includes three paraprofessionals. I know that there are major shortages within the special education department specifically around the district. So that's something to really take into consideration. And one thing I think is really important to ask is whether these resource teachers and paras would follow their students. So the first part of that is just, would they be offered the chance to follow their students? My understanding is that at least for our kids at Bear Valley, that would not be the case. And for kids with special needs, with kids with an IEP, so much goes into making sure that that child really does receive the services in an individual education program. I mean, there's a lot that goes into that. And I think the relationship that teachers have with their students and also with other staff members is a key part of that. Transferring the entire group of special education students from a closing school to not just one, but potentially three other schools is a big deal. And if they're not transferring with their students, that is then resource teachers existing at those schools absorbing many more students on their caseload. And, and that's also just something to really consider. Because if we're, if we're intending to meet the needs and our special education teachers are already sort of at their limit, what does that mean? Are we going to be able to keep these teachers? Are we going to be able to keep these paras? Is this going to create a bigger shortage and are we going to be able to service the needs of our students? And I'll just end by saying, there is right now a, a big culture of mistrust. I think within rightsizing, within special education, there is a desperate desire for transparency. And I think it's really important that you guys have the steps in place to not just collect that data, but to share it with complete transparency if you're wanting to have accountability and acceptance within these vulnerable communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. You have three minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Well, thank you for taking the time to listen to the community this evening. I'm Heather Woolrich and I've worked with the Anchorage School District as a teacher for 25 years. Over the past couple of weeks, I've spoken with many of you about rightsizing and how it's critical that we do this correctly. While we work as a community to solve this problem, we should also focus on avoiding creating other major problems that closing schools may create. I'm here tonight to speak on the effect that closures will have on teacher retention. As a building induction liaison, I know the importance of keeping teachers and creating a professional community that helps attract future educators. Our community has been told that rightsizing will create teaching teams and partnerships. But I'm concerned that closing sites like Bear Valley will have the opposite outcomes that the district is wanting. I conducted my own survey of the Bear Valley staff and from the respondents, I've learned that we have over 367 collective years of education experience. 167 of those years are in service at Bear Valley. Our community is based on trust, appreciation for each other, and respect. This type of environment is very hard to build. The staff has been told that we will have jobs, but how will, how many of us will actually want to move and restart that process of establishing oneself in a new community? Many of the staff at Bear Valley are not there because we need to be, but because we love what we do and the community that we serve. My survey also indicated that 83.3% of the respondents are already looking into alternative employment options rather than moving to a new site. Shocking. So Bear Valley staff members are highly effective and competent at what they do. I'll give an example from my own grade level. Last year, our kindergarten class started with a reading proficiency rate on their M-class testing at 21%. By the end of the year, our scores were at 99% proficiency or well above proficiency. These results are of the highly effective teaching community that we have. In a time when we cannot fill all of our classrooms with certified teachers, can ASD really afford to lose more seasoned educators? I strongly urge the board to remove Bear Valley from the school closure list so we can focus on teaching our future leaders. See how we can work together to make education better for all of our ASD students. I've sent the board a copy of my professional CV so you can see the caliber of educators that you have at Bear Valley. Please do all that you can to keep us within ASD. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our last two testifiers are Chris Liu and Haley Wilkinson. Welcome, Chris. You have three minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for your kind attention tonight. I appreciate the, as I've stated before, the very difficult, difficult role that all of you are in. I cannot add anything to what you have heard from the students, other families, supporters of why Bear Valley Elementary School should not close. I think that the process that Mr. Anderson and his staff have been going through is been very valuable in giving you folks, that as I understand, he will prepare for you, the missing pieces of data in utilization of the building, in population potential, in the specialty of programs. And everything else that you have learned and heard about what I assume most have not known about Bear Valley. Everything from the, the community support, the before and after care preschool, and just the core piece that this is a true community school. I also want to add a couple of things that I've observed listening tonight. One was the, the simple dilemma. And it, it's a dilemma. I know it's not in the rubric, but many folks just can't understand how one of the highest-rated schools by any measure of metrics of achievement and recognition is being proposed to be closed. Now, I get the rubric and it wasn't factored in, but that's a tough role to be in if you do decide to move forward with closure. Because it's out there. The Anchorage School District does not live in a, in, in a bubble unto itself. You live in this community. And this community is scratching their head. So again, I, I hope that that is something that you will factor in. The other observation is simply the recognition of the economic forces that benefit this state that look for quality schools. And again, repeatedly, it's Bear Valley. So I hope you will reconsider and take us off that list. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our last testifier is Haley Wilkinson. Haley, you have three minutes. You can begin when you're ready. Thank you.
Hi there. Good to see you again. Thank you for having me. My name is Haley Wilkinson. And like I said last time, I am a former Bear Valley student and I also have a preschooler who goes there right now as well. And I have a daughter who's an up-and-coming cub. And I got a little emotional last time because it was difficult to, to speak without doing so. But I've had a lot of time to listen to my community speak and it's really made me feel so much more strong inside myself and knowing that our community has come together and the reason that we've come together is because we have such a, a great thing going where we are. And that's what's brought so many people from across town, across the country. And like I said, me personally, bringing me back to my roots. And so one of my biggest things that I feel like you guys have heard quite a bit about today is our preschool. So I, like I told you last time, signed up for three different preschools. I paid about $600 down. I was in the twenties, thirties, and teens on all the waitlists. During COVID, I left my job with the state because I lost my childcare during that time and I took three years off. And I finally got back with the state where I felt like I had my childcare set up. My five-year plan was once again reinstated. And I felt confident. I was previously looking into privatizing my students within the Montessori community. But I felt a pull back to Bear Valley and I got kind of more connected with some of my neighbors who currently were enrolled there. And I realized that the school has not strayed from where it was when I was a child. And that was something that I felt really strongly about. And when I went to enroll with the preschool and I saw that Mr. Farrell, which was my family's and my husband's family's teacher, was the director there, that made me feel good and made me feel strong about my decision. I felt that mother's intuition that I made the right choice by not going to Montessori. I actually got in about halfway, a few days into the, to the start of the school year. So I chose not to switch over. And I, like I said, have gone back to the state. I've been planning on relying on the before and after-school care. And without this care, I am looking at possibly leaving my job with the state once again. And I just don't want to do that. Like, I love my job. I work for the Department of Health. I've been with the state for almost 13 years. I don't want to leave my job again and I don't have any other options. I have a two-year-old and a six-year-old or soon-to-be six-year-old. So please save our school, save our community from this. You guys don't have the options. I was at the community conversation. I was asking what my options were for preschool and before and after-school care. And you said that's during the transition stage. We're in the closer stage now.
Thank you for your testimony. That concludes our public testimony. But before we do, I just want to ask one last time for a couple of folks who weren't available earlier to ensure we didn't miss anyone. Christine Erwin, Carissa Silva, Carolyn Storm, Amy Johnson, Julie Rognes. Okay, seeing none. Thank you for participating in the meeting tonight. We're going to take a five-minute at ease. All right. It is 10:13 PM. We are back in order. We are at our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Well, before we do that, I'm going to ask if any board member wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda. Hearing seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as is.
Well, second.
Made by Member Bellamy, seconded by Member Wilson. Is there any opposition to approving the consent agenda as listed? Apologies, we're going to need to do a voice vote. Ms. Sullivan, would you please call the roll?
Member Bellamy? Member Higgins? Member J, Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes.
Our consent agenda is adopted 7-0. I'm going to ask for a motion and then unanimous consent to move action item F3 to F1. That's the charter renewal ASD memorandum number 058 for Rikishula German Immersion School. As we have individuals waiting to speak with us on that item, is there a motion?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I moved to, uh, move item three to item one. Is that the request?
Yes. Yeah, yep. Yep. Made by Member Bellamy, seconded by Member Lessons. Any objection? Hearing seeing none. We have approved that change of the orders of the day. We are now on to F1, which is ASD memorandum number 058, Charter School Renewal, Rikishula German Immersion School. Ms. Sullivan, do we have anyone who wishes to provide testimony? Or are we just moving straight to discussion? Okay, perfect. So we would entertain, knowing there isn't any public testimony, we need a motion to approve ASD memorandum number 058.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve memorandum number 058.
Second?
I, I most certainly can. I, I moved, I moved to approve ASD memorandum number 058, Charter School Renewal, Rikishula German Immersion School.
Second?
Made by Member Bellamy, seconded by Member Lessons. Is there discussion? Member Higgins? Sure. Yep. And we can welcome our partners from Rikishula forward if you'd like. I have a question that, through Dr. Brian, if you don't object, I was asking the, the team directly. During our work session, I addressed a letter that we received from the APC and I think from the principal of the, the program who, we appreciate you being with us here tonight. Specifically addressing that the charter program may need a building to ensure the long-term viability of the charter school. That would be through the rightsizing process. Could you speak to, is, is, was that a fair interpretation of the letter? Or is there, is the program aside from and without a building to be appropriated through the rightsizing progress process, long-term, does it have long-term viability with what we know today regarding uncertain and unpredictable and inadequate, frankly, funding for public education in Alaska?
Yeah, I can take it. You can take it.
Uh, yes. Yes, it would be viable moving into the future. However, we would need to make personnel cuts at a, a substantial amount of personnel cuts, which would naturally affect our program and the support that our students receive.
And I'll also point out that we're not solely relying on the ASD building. Our letter, it, it is kind of a footnote in it, but we are and have been continually negotiating with our landlord as a contingency of, we know an ASD facility is not guaranteed. So we have been working with our landlord this entire past year to negotiate a new lease if needed. So both of these are happening in tangent.
Understood. I appreciate that additional context. I, during our work session, I spoke to my hesitancy if, if the language in that letter were to be interpreted literally. My concern would be our, we are unclear at this point how the rightsizing effort will play out. And so we have no idea if we'll be able to offer a building that is vacated through the rightsizing initiative to any program on charter or otherwise. And so gaining that additional clarity, I think that resolves my underlying inquiry. Are there other board members who wish to have discussion on the, on the motion? Member Lessons?
Thank you for being here at this late hour. I think my question also arose during the work session. I'm aware that if a substantial inflation adjustment to the base student allocation were to move through the legislature this upcoming session, it would substantially Were to move through the legislature this upcoming session, it would substantially. Depending on the magnitude, uh, change A S, the district's um, ability to serve students. Uh, to to decrease class sizes, um, increase resources. How would, what would you do? With a substantial base student allocation, what are your priorities?
Going into budget. Frankly, uh, we keep our staff. Right, right now, we just have such a deficit between the amount of projected funding to come in. And our pro form, meaning to keep our staff. Um, it's just such a wide gap. That the goal would be to maintain. What we have and not to lose more personnel. We lost, uh, one classroom teacher, our evening custodian and our counselor this last year. And our and our A P C stills. Spent over half a million dollars out of their rollover funds. Those roller funds will be exhausted in a few years, uh, especially at the. That the current lease rate. Um, so our goal would be to maintain what we have because we believe that we're providing an amazing. Uh, educational experience for our students. Where they receive a lot of support in a very academic rigorous environment. And so the goal would be to. Keep doing what we're doing, um, and maintain that and not lose staff that is vital to supporting that program.
Uh, Member Lessons, follow up, then we'll move to Member Bellamy.
I have an unrelated question. Um, another uh, topic that arose was the prospect of. A central location, a location. On one side of town or another. My my question is actually, uh, is there any utility? Knowing that your students move into the German program at service. What is the relationship between, I mean, it does proximity to that program? Benefit you right now? Right now, you're probably three and a half miles away if I had to like. Go up and down Dowling. Or do you ever leverage that? Partnership?
Yeah, that partnership is super important to us, right? Gives students uh, the availability to continue their German studies. Uh, really kindergarten all the way through their senior year. Um. Two springs ago, we had. An ambassador from Germany come over and we had a chance to meet her and and be part of a ceremony that was held at service. And our students that were part of that German program. Asked such amazing questions about immigration and taxation and Germany, Germany's role. In the world, all done in German. And their interaction was just amazing to see and felt really proud to be part of a program. That was providing students with these skills to. Take their their language level to. A a very high academic level to engage with, uh, and talk about. Important topics in our world. So yes, that partnership that we have with service with A S D is super, super important. Very, very um, dear to us. Um, as far as our location for that. When when we've looked at the map, just like you guys have where students are living and located, our population is all over town. From Eagle River to Girdwood Hillside. Over to West Side. And so we have students all over the place and they come to us for our program, not because we're convenient to get to. But because of the program that we have and we provide for our students. Once again, very rigorous, but very supportive. Great community to be a part of. Last year, we had over three thousand five hundred recorded volunteer hours from our community. We have two supporting uh, parent teacher organizations. It's, um, so do I feel like our location being central? Is is a benefit? Yeah, but we've moved four times. And each one of those times our enrollment has gone up. And I have no doubt by providing a. Amazing educational experience that we will continue that trend.
Member Bellamy.
Okay, thank you. And thank you guys for hanging around, uh, because I I this helps me. Um, understand, I I just sense urgency in the letters. That we receive from you and I just wanted to make sure that. That your application was going to go, you know, what would be. Not dependent upon what happens with the right size of project. So, um, you've given me that context now, so I'm not quite as panicked in trying to figure out. Cause if we can't, we don't have that information tonight, so we may have had to. My thought was, well, maybe we could. Just, you know, vote on this at a a date specific time. Uh, but as you guys have explained tonight, that's not an issue, so I'm 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 good with the application. Thank you.
Member Higgins, do you have a question? Your mic's on.
Not a miss, no.
Perfect, okay. Um, then I I wanna uh, a quick follow up on a comment, um, I think that was made, and I think first I'll echo. Um, and agree with um, something that was said earlier, which is, um, the program's producing amazing academic results. It's. Um, beloved by those involved in it. I I think that that's pretty clear. Um. I will make the point that while it, um. Parents might be able to um, work around the fact that it it could potentially not be conveniently located. There is a subset of parents that, um, if it is not conveniently located, even if they wish to participate in the program. Um. That will, that would become problematic and a barrier for access. Uh, this board has approved and has set in place for years a guardrail which indicates that we prioritize removing barriers. Um, which prevent equity of access for further and optional programs. And one of the the actions I'm going to pursue as part of the. Um, right sizing initiative should a charter program be given a building is to direct the administration to partner with the charter program leadership. And the A P C to uh, come to some sort of agreement as to what it would look like, um, to break down that wall of transportation. And equity and that equity of access barrier, um, frankly, uh, because we know. Transportation is an issue which prevents families from being able to access charter programs. And so I think my question boils down to. Um, would this board have an ally, um, with Rokea's leadership and A P C, um, in navigating that process?
As the A P C chair, absolutely. Uh, we do not want our board, our school to be exclusive by any means. Um, we every single year, our board, our principal and our two nonprofit parent boards, we attend A S D's. Um, spring fairs to try and market ourselves to the entire A S D community. And we feel like we've been very successful with that, as Hirstrock mentioned in. Our students are from all over the place. You know, they come ten miles away from Girdwood just to come to the middle of town. They come from Girdwood. We have a few even from outside of the municipality. We're from all over and we would love to extend this to even more families.
Can I speak to as well? Yeah, we really believe in the uh, education that we are providing. We'd love to share it with everybody that we can, like. So if we have more space, we'll have more availability to expand our program as well. Um. Beyond what Frau Colvin has has shared, we we also have a great before and after school program. That is ran by our teacher R S I, Rikishula Incorporated. We have about two hundred some students that stay after school every day and be part of it. Part of that is there's also scholarships that people can apply for. So we are also trying to find ways to break down those barriers. This last summer, we met with student nutrition nutrition to see. What can we bring into our community? And at that point, af- after that meeting, we decided this wasn't something that we were ready to, that we could provide at this point in our current facility also. Um, and so we are looking about ways to expand it because we believe in what we have and we want to share it with as many students as possible.
Thank you for that. Any additional questions or discussion? On this before we. Hearing seeing that, I wanted to thank everyone from the program for being present tonight and taking time out. I understand it was a um, a late meeting and so, um, it isn't, uh, doesn't go without notice, so thank you. Um, Ms. Sullivan, you can call the roll, please.
This is for item one, right?
Okay, sure. Um. So. Member Higgins, do you have a question before we vote?
This is for um, item number one, right?
So we we're approving this vote is to approve A S D memorandum number zero five eight. And uh, Member Bellamy is the mover of the motion. Can you state into the record the language that's listed, um, there on the screen under number one, the motion specifically?
Yeah, I've got two, I've got issue.
Yes, I I can. Uh, the motion was to approve the renewal of Rikishula's Charter Schools Charter. For an additional ten years through the twenty thirty four through twenty thirty five school year.
Ms. Sullivan, can you please call it?
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations and thanks again.
Thanks, Father.
Our next item on the agenda was originally F one, is now F two, which is A S D memorandum number zero four one, the six year capital improvement plan or C I P project tables. Um, can I have a motion to approve utilizing the language in board docs?
Mister Chair? I uh, moved to approve memorandum number zero four one, the six year capital improvement plan or C I P project tables.
Second.
Yes, why?
All right, so we, uh, made by Member Bellamy, seconded by Member Wilson. Is there discussion on this item?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes, I'd like to move to remove, um, uh, for year four demolition of Abbott Loop Elementary at a cost of two point five million.
Second.
Like to, let me.
Uh, be up for discussion as the mover of the motion, Member Higgins, the floor is yours.
Well, um, this has been an ongoing issue here and it's been confusing and it's frustrating. Um, because originally we gave them, uh, for the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. A five year period because that's the period in which they have to address the fire suppression system. And the cost of that has been really varied. Originally, it was one million. It became a lot more. Cause it was things other than suffice pressure system. Let's say it's three million now. So for about the cost of the fire suppression system. Uh, we're gonna demolish it. It's, this has been a big issue. Uh, I've heard that, uh, end of somebody on the A P C didn't want the school. But you had the top two speak people the same day come in here and tell you how they wanted it and they needed it. They don't have another place to go. Um, uh, within that, um, then I uh, get an idea that they want Baxter, but they did a motion, so I went and checked that. And they did a motion and said, if we lose this school, we'd like to have another school. That's not the same thing. So what we've got right now is they don't, we've got Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. You want to give. Um, honor to the, to the Denina people and all this. This school does better than the Alaska natives otherwise, and for the cost of demolishing it. We could fix the fire suppression system to meet the code. Then isn't going to rebuild the school and allow them to keep it. I'm not advocating to add this to the bond right now to fix it. Because I don't know what schools we're going to keep and which ones we don't. But if there's not a school available for them. This one is an inexpensive school to be able to maintain. They want it. They're working with the state, with the city's parks, with the land behind it for things for the kids. It's just working great for them. They're happy with it. Um, and it's difficult. For people to, we'd see it with Rokasula, we see it with others, to be able to accommodate a school. It's it's expensive, it's difficult. And this is a group that really wants to keep that. So rather than spend two and a half million dollars. Uh, to the completely destroy a functional school, which we may use for other purposes, okay? Uh, we could spend three million and fix it school and then it's fully functioning. So I'm requesting, I'm moving to remove for year four. The demolition of Abbott Loop Elementary for two and a half million. I think that's a well that that leaves open the options. As to what we might have in the way of schools or might not, and it gives them a chance to maintain. A facility for them. Remember, they got this school after they were at East High School because they got scattered all over the place. It was an awful environment for them. And this one would go a long way to keeping and being supportive of that group. Thank you.
Uh, Member Bellamy, then I'll put myself on the queue.
Okay, thank you. So I thought the fire marshal. Gave them a certain. Period of time in that building. I didn't think that was us. So do we know that the fire marshal is going to do what you want, think they're gonna do?
I I would love to can I address that or you want someone else?
No, we're not gonna have board member address it. The fire marshal said that's gonna come to the superintendent. Thank you.
So to clarify, the original bond that was passed was for three point nine six million. We have retained those funds, so we didn't wouldn't need another bond. We think the estimate is about three and a half million now. The last time we went out for bid, it did include some other things, but we got zero bidders.
For for good.
For the fire suppression plus some interior walls and some other minor changes. Um. If a fire suppression system was installed or probably in the process of being installed. Um, I would suspect we could work with the fire marshal. Um, we did retain the funds in case the building was demoed. Um, I think all the board knows, the very last decision the board did make was to close the school. Um, followed by to offer the school to Alaska Native Charter School for five years. Um, because that's what the fire marshal gave us for a waiver. Um, and there are. People who believe it's unsafe. The lack of a fire suppression system is not unsafe to students during the school day. Um, it's merely a risk to the structure if there is a fire. So that's where we stand. If the board. If the board's previous decision wasn't a final decision. And now the school is going to remain open. Um, we have the funds to. Um. Go out and try to get a fire suppression system. Again, we don't know if we'll get a bidder again. Um, it's.
Will the, I guess my question is, will the fire marshal approve? Them staying longer, even if. I I mean.
Without a fire suppression system. It's hard to know with every, uh. Change of political leadership within the city, there's always, who knows who's going to remain in the current position they have? Um. I I don't know. I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen in the next three years with who is in that position. I mean, that that certainly makes a difference, right?
Thank you, Member Bellamy. Thank you, Mister Anderson. Uh, I'm gonna um, speak to the the motion and I I think I'm gonna speak against it. Um, but I understand it's well intended. Uh, I I have the resolution in front of me and I I'm attended a late October. Meeting by the Academic Policy Committee of the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, but I I want to back up. First to kind of the the history of what happened here. Um. In this current iteration of the board, um, join this, it comprises governing body, um, A N C C S was in a upstairs hallway of East High. Um, we then took the step of closing Abbott Loop Elementary. Um, and then subsequently offering that to the um, the program and. Agreed that there would be a five year period of time where A N C C S could use that building, at which point, um, they would transition to another facility. And, um. That program or that building, uh, Abbott Loop Elementary specifically would be closed. That occurred both last fall and early this year. Um, there, there's no, there are no confusing timelines. It's been very straightforward. I mean, this group has been a part of all of it, and so. Um, there, there, there's no lack of clarity and I'm I'm not sure why anyone would indicate as such. With that said, um, there's also um, no um, ambiguity regarding the resolution that was submitted to the board. From the A N C C S Academic Policy Committee, um, which clearly states that, um, its desire is not to remain in Abbott Loop Elementary long term. Uh, but that it be continued to be prioritized, um, in future right size and the future right size and conversations and as other buildings remain available. Uh, to be a permanent home. I also know from sitting through the um, academic policy committee, uh, academic policy committee meeting, which. Um, went, I think, over two hours in length. It was really informative and they have a great group there doing their best for students. Um, that the um, committee is is really, um. Uh, hopeful and optimistic about the opportunity of partnering with a, um. Tribal organization to obtain a building, um, on indigenous land with, um, that that is leased to them at no cost or potentially even provided to the program. Um, there, it's, it's a in-depth proposal that's. Goes through a different federal program that isn't any part of A S D, um, but they are convinced that this is an option for them. And so I I don't see any ask from the um, committee. That, um, they are indicating that they would like to stay in Abbott Loop Elementary long term, which makes sense because the board, um, indicated and committed to. Um, closing this building permanently after the. closing this building permanently after the temporary stay of ANCCS, who by, as I understand it, the majority of their students are actually located towards the neighborhood of East Anchorage. And so that was another desire that was expressed by the APC broadly speaking, when I attended their meeting, is that they'd like to be closer to their students. But they also would prefer to move as few times as possible, which is why we granted them a significant length on the temporary stay at Abbott Loop Elementary. And so I think our current plan is wise. It also sets the stage for the property that on which the Abbott Loop Elementary building sits to be potentially used by the municipality of Anchorage in creative ways. One potential use I would like to see the municipality consider, though the board has no sway over, is turning that plot into affordable housing, which that neighborhood and part of town certainly could use more. That lot is adjacent to a major transportation corridor. And property values in that portion of town are not unrealistic for a first-time home buyer. And so there's some real synergy to that. And I think the municipality might be able to use that resource for that purpose. And in turn, we, as the board has been briefed on multiple occasions, have an excess capacity of elementary schools. And so I don't, I don't know where we would pull the students to fill that building from. And so there's just a too few answered questions. But again, I appreciate the, the desire and the regret that closing schools has become a viable option that makes sense, given a whole host of things are utter out of our control, but this decision and this process have been very clear, very deliberate and easy to follow. And no new information has come up, which should cause the board to reconsider. And so I'll, I'll end my remarks there. Are there other comments regarding this motion? Member Higgins?
Well, just from a history standpoint, one time they thought they had to raise the roof and do all this, so they were going to demolish the school, have to build a new one, and they found out they didn't have to do all that to meet the code. But my question first of all is, if we decide to hand this over to the muni, are we required to remove the school before they take it back?
So the process is for the board to declare it excess, the assembly accepts it through the real estate office, of course, and then the real estate, and then the assembly could make a determination as to whether they wanted to retain the building or demo the building or use it for housing. I suspect because it is such an old building, they probably would not retain the building, but there's always a chance they would want to put a fire suppression system in. If they chose to demo the building, then their next decision would be really whether they wanted to pay to have it demoed or whether they were going to require AST to demo the building. But we're obviously not in a position to move anything forward at this time to, to see where they feel on that. Other than, I think several of us have heard comments publicly at joint board assembly meetings about looking for, for housing, and that was mentioned at least once, along with another lot.
I'll add additional context to the question which was asked, which was regarding, will AST essentially have to pay the cost to demo the building should the building be given to the municipality and they not deem it necessary for whatever purpose they so choose? And the, the answer to that is not, not necessarily. And I think that we can make a compelling case as a board, if we spoke with one voice and indicated that what our students in the nearby elementary schools really could benefit from is, and what our educators could benefit from is additional affordable housing in that area on a major transportation corridor. And I think we could make the same case for some other property we have. And it's, it's something I'm, I'm working on, but certainly not prioritizing, given the other conversations we have. And so again, I, I think this is, I would, I would best characterize this as something that has already been dealt with and given the significant conversations we're already navigating, I, I don't see revisiting this conversation as a benefit. Thank you. Are there other points of conversation? Member Donley?
So back when the municipality wanted to do a new bus barn, we discussed that this, this school district had three undeveloped pieces of land spread out in different parts of the municipality. And they wanted to use one of those for that. Do we still have that land?
That was the lot behind the Totem Theater. We still have that land. A lot of it is wetlands. So there's a lot of rules, of course, in building on top of wetlands. I think you have to, you have to work with a number of agencies. And you have to create another wetland if you take one away. And of course, it's expensive. So they ended up deciding that was not a good lot for the bus barn. That in the neighborhood didn't want a bunch of buses starting up their engines all winter. So the mayor and his team were, were working a, an agreement with a developer where the developer was going to pay to build the new bus barn. And the muni was going to give us some land that really was pretty close to where the current bus barn is. They were going to pay to demo our current facility and to build the whole new one. Because the value of the land is, was so much that it, it, the desire to get that land was more than the small amount that it would have cost to demo it, but it all died.
Well, Jim, my, my question goes to, do we still have those three parcels of land that were set aside for potential future school construction? They're empty and vacant.
We do have the West Park land, which is over by 100th Street in West Anchorage. We have the Totem Lot that's still plotted and zoned for schools. And we have an agreement with a clutena for the land near Powder Ridge. But that's not necessarily land we could give back to the city, even if we wanted to. It's, it's more of a, an agreement than it is land that we own, own. So yes, the Totem Lot is still there. It's behind the theater. You can see it today. Well, maybe not today, but tomorrow, if you drive by, just go behind the theater and it's right back in that area.
So, Mr. President, my, my point in asking these questions was just to identify that there is land that's completely undeveloped. If the municipality chose to move forward with housing, could reach out to us and it wouldn't require us to tear down a school to facilitate that.
Yeah, thank you, Member Donley, for the point. I, I don't know that there's a parcel that's adjacent to that same area of town. And with that said, all of the parcels that we just discussed wouldn't put a dent in the amount of affordable housing that is really needed in Anchorage. And so while your points will take him, I think that this, it's a yes and situation. In my opinion, as someone who wants to see more affordable housing for our educators, I'll just say that the last time I made the calculation when I submitted written comments to the assembly, I believe a first-year educator salary still is over a third of rent on a two-bedroom apartment is still over a third of a first-year educator's salary here in ASD. And that's after we gave one of the largest one-year increases to our educators in recent memory. And so we've got a lot of work to do as a community to address that. I, I think this could potentially be a solution, but again, that's really outside of our scope. But I think if we offer up this potential parcel at some point as part of a conversation, that would be a more appropriate use than opening up another elementary school when we're talking about closing others. With that said, I don't think now is the time for the conversation, which is why I think the motion is well-intended but ill-kind. And so I would encourage a no vote. Is there other conversation on this motion? Member Higgins?
I'll just say this, the last, you made reference to something about their dream of wanting to have a school built, but they also came in here just a couple of meetings ago and said they wanted to maintain this school. They asked for it. When it came up about possible another school, they said yes. So before you put them in a category, says they don't want to be in there, they'll come out there twice in two ways. One with the recent motion, one is they came in front of the board and said they wanted it. Two, they said that they can't keep that, they're looking for another one. We know we got so much space we need for charter schools to really help them. And this is an opportunity. And I think there's also opportunities to use the space for other things within dispute if we wanted to. So all I'm asking is just simply, let's not close the door on their request of a, of a, of Alaska Native Cultural Charter School of trying to maintain themselves without being suddenly bind themselves in East High School or something else. Again, that was an awful situation. I heard the stories on that.
Yeah, thank you, Member Higgins, to your point. I, the, the testimony that was given that you referenced occurred before the resolution that was received after their 10:30 APC meeting. And so that's why I'm referencing a, a sequence of events that happened. I went to that APC meeting to seek clarity, frank, frankly, after their testimony to this board. Because there was confusion as to whether their preference was to remain in Abbott Loop long-term, to seek a building that was available via rightsizing or to obtain a new building via their unique pathway, potentially through collaboration in federal programs. And so I went to their meeting with getting clarity in mind, and that's where that resolution, resolution came from. So I'm just referencing what they've put in writing. With that said, again, I, I think the, the conversation is well-intended, but I, I don't think there's a need for the board to revisit the decision. And so that's where my remarks are coming from. With that said, is there any additional conversation before we ask for a vote? Hearing seen none, Ms. Sullivan, would you call the roll, please?
Member Higgins? Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
No.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Lessons?
No.
Member Wilson?
No.
President Holloman?
No.
That motion fails five to two. We're back at the main motion to approve AST memorandum number zero four one, the six-year capital improvement plan or CIP project tables. Is there additional discussion? Hearing seen none, Ms. Bellamy, is the mover, can you please read into the record the language under the motion there on the screen?
Yes. The motion is to approve the attached Anchorage School District's six-year capital improvement plan project tables for July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2031.
Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins? Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yep, yes, sorry.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yeah.
That motion passes five to two. That completes our second action item. We are now on our final action item, which is AST memorandum number zero four two, approval of April 2025 bond proposal. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move to approve memorandum number zero four two, approval of April 2025 bond proposal.
Second.
Made by member Bellamy, seconded by member Wilson. Before we proceed to discussion, we're bumping up against our 11 o'clock end time, which without extending the meeting, we would automatically adjourn, I believe, according to our policy. And so can I have a, a motion to extend our meeting to 11:15?
Mr. Chair, I move to extend our meeting till 11:15.
Second.
Made by member Bellamy, seconded by member Wilson. Is there any objection? Hearing seen none, we're extended till 11:15. We're now in discussion on AST memorandum number zero four two, approval of the 2025 bond proposal. Is there a discussion from administration?
No, administration has no comment. We're happy to answer questions.
Then we'll move to discussion. Member Lessons, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, thank you. There were some changes which I discussed with the administration in my one-on-one bond. I mean, every year, different emergent needs surface. But one question that arose was a result of the announcement that Ms. made public yesterday about the schedule change for the academies. There is design for phased building renovation in this plan, excuse me, I'm, I'm looking at the, the previous CIP and also this current one. Bartlett High School Infrastructure Improvements and Design. And it complete, in there, it says it completes the design to 100% per the board-approved master plan. One, I mean, Bartlett needs a lot of work. I think we, we got a wonderful and rich presentation from, from the team involved with all of that. However, one of the themes in the Bartlett redesign is that learning spaces are supposed to be organized to support career academies. Facilities would be aligned with ASD initiatives for academies. I don't want to get too far down the rabbit hole, but I think my question is, does the schedule change announced yesterday have implications for the design work that would be produced via this bond package?
I'll give initial thoughts and then the team can follow up. I presume that regardless of academies or no academies or modified academies, there will be strong CTE programs at Bartlett. As a, a school that offers CTE programs right now, that should continue in the future. Would the team like to add anything to that?
Sure. So when the, when the board approved the plan, it really was an architect's sketch with a lot of thought put into it. And really breaking it out into three phases because you can't do a building that big all at once. That was not a design. This really is a design that allows you to do the full building renovation over the course of three phases. And since it's at 0% design, we know that there would be CTE components. There would be looking at a lot of things, but there's nothing specific at this point. Once Larry gets started on the design, him and Tom would get with Val Ballerud and start working on, you know, once it got past 35% or so. But at, at this point, we're a long ways off from that.
I appreciate that. The school clearly is an asset to the community. It clearly needs work. I just wanted a little bit of clarification about what the plan means. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Other discussion before I jump in? Not seeing any, I'll ask the question I think I addressed in finance and then in my one-on-one related to roof restorations. We, I believe we know that there are a number of roofs right now that would be candidates for restorative work, which would stem damage being done to them through just normal wear and tear and reset the, the life clock on those parts of the facility. I, I don't see that the bond has included any of those types of projects. Given the, the value that they present to the community and the, the delta between a roof restoration and a replacement. I'm, I'm struggling to understand why we wouldn't want to consider that kind of project in this bond. I, I think that, you know, even during the rightsizing conversation, we've continually referenced buildings that have roofs that are leaky, which is a, a product of not engaging in as much preventative maintenance as we would normally if we had school bond debt reimbursement. And so I'm, I'm wondering if there's no place in a, a bond proposition for this upcoming April that includes some type of project of that nature. And thanks.
We, we do still have some roof projects that haven't been done and will be worked on next year to include Chugiak, which is a massive portion and some other school buildings. I think you're talking about the roof renewals. Specifically, the one vendor that came in and talked about two months ago and said we should do more of those. We, we didn't include it because we've been successful at bonds below, you know, 65, 64 million dollars. We have a lot of roofs being worked on right now that, that are, are tapping out the aggressive roof repair. So we, we didn't include it at, at risk of losing another bond after the one two years ago.
And just a quick follow-up then. Appreciate that answer. We, the board received emails regarding at least one particular roof that had maybe new and significant damage related to the increased snowfall that we've seen over the past two winters. I'm assuming we, we took that into account when we decided what projects to place on that bond. I know that we have moved roof projects up in, in order on our CIP based on the, the need of the project. based on the the need of the project and and any safety elements encompassed in whether it be a renewal or renovation or a replacement. And so I'm just want to confirm, I guess we're considering all that. And in six months, we're not going to be wishing we had prioritized this kind of project that we know keeps our students safe and warm during winter. Thanks.
So we've had an engineer going through our roofs for the past five months. Five months, a little bit longer, looking for every place where there might be a wooden truss that was the top hung truss style. Where lots of the roofs across Anchorage Bowl were failing. We knew that at Chinook Elementary, it was like many of our schools, it would have little chunks of that building was put on during different periods. And we did find an area over six classrooms that has six top hung trusses. And you will see on the next work session for rightsizing that we can actually perform everything we need at that building without that one section. Currently, we we could put a roof on it, but because it's the top hung trusses, we'd have to build a metal girder or a metal frame roof on top of the current roof at a cost of about a million and a half dollars for six classrooms we don't need. Because we have enough capacity left in the building. And we really were waiting for that engineer analysis to be able to move forward. We still have nine point six million dollars from the legislature in reimbursable grants from last summer that the governor did not veto. We intentionally have not come to the board with a list of priorities at this time because we weren't sure what rightsizing would end up looking like. If in fact, we need some to put in a a pre case center and we need to go in and do cost estimates for a lot of bathrooms, then certainly a portion of that would come out of that. But I I'm somewhat certain that depending on how rightsizing ends up, we still have enough funding to be able to look at those types of projects without jeopardizing the bond.
Thank you. I appreciate those questions being answered. Is there additional discussion before we move to a vote, Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Jim. So what I'm getting from the memorandum is that we can anticipate, and I know this is all difficult, projecting debt retirement. But from the information here, we could anticipate about a thirty three million dollar debt retirement at the same time where we would be with this bond proposal incurring about an additional sixty three million dollars in debt. Is that accurate?
It it is accurate, but if you look at the third column over the annual debt, prime and interest rate is about five million per year. So obviously, it's spread over thirty years like like all other payments. So we're still be paying off more. Certainly more this next year than the five million dollars this would add. But total, when you look at the total bond proposition amount, that's correct. It gets a little funny when you realize that the heavy equipment replacement at three point eight is at a ten year. While as the buildings are at a thirty year.
I see, okay.
And it's really just the way the annuity rolls out on it. Or the amortization, sorry.
Yeah, it's been, it's almost amazing how close the the last debt retirement was to the new debt over for quite a few years now, stayed there. So this would be a little bit different than we've been doing.
It would. I I think if we had, obviously, when you fail to pass a bond for a year and you're paying off for two years and you still try to keep the bond underneath the, you know, what you paid off during that timeframe at some point, that's where you go from a hundred and seventy million in deferred maintenance in two thousand and ten to over a billion and twenty four.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Any additional discussion before we move to a vote? Hearing seeing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll? Member Bellamy, for the record, we need you to read the motion on the screen, please.
Yes, sir. The motion is to approve the following bond proposal. Proposition one, security improvements. Bartlett High School Infrastructure Improvement and Design. Spring Hill Elementary School Improvements. Campbell Elementary School Renovation, West High School Utilidor Phase Three. Planning and design for twenty twenty four, twenty five projects and heavy equipment replacement in the amount of sixty three million eight hundred twenty two. Wait, yeah, thousand dollars.
Thank you. And that was made by Member Bellamy, seconded by Member Wilson. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes.
The memorandum number zero four two passes seven zero. We'll move on to non action items, which which we have one. Any discussion on that item before we move on? Hearing seeing none, I just want to flag that we have ten minutes left in our meeting. We have a superintendent update under I one. Next, Dr. Brent Fleurjors.
Just two things. Obviously, the the first thing that me and my team will be working on over the next few weeks will be the rightsizing plan, continuing to gather feedback and collaborate with community members, board members as needed as we get closer to our December seventeenth date. The second thing that I'll be working on is collaborating with our steering committee and other stakeholders to develop some options for what academies or that type of work will look like moving forward. We have a lot of stakeholders that have invested hundreds of hours and a lot of time in developing a strong plan. It wasn't prudent to move forward with a schedule change at this time for the reasons that I explained in the letter that I submitted to the community. So what that means is that we'll need to make a pretty sharp pivot. But the goal and vision remains the same, which is we need to figure out ways to equip students with opportunities to take college level coursework as well as current technical education coursework, so that we can equip them with the skills and knowledge they need to be successful. So we'll be putting a lot of thought into what that looks like. So I'm very limited in what I can discuss right now, but really, that's because at the heart of the success of academies is collaborating with not just ASC staff, but really great community members, including the business community, UAA, or Economic Development Corporation, or Chamber and others. And I want them involved as we make this pivot, but I'm committed to moving that work in the spirit of the board goal forward. So please stay tuned over the coming weeks. I know that students and teachers have a lot of questions as to what's next. That's why I'm taking a little bit of time before I release details. Thank you.
Any questions before the superintendent, before we move on? Hearing seeing none, we'll move on to member lessons.
Maybe this is a follow up for another time. That's not nearing midnight. I would be interested in, I know about a year ago, we had folks from the our partnership with the Lower Yukon School District. And they do a partnership with like the third session at King Tech. But that also helps King Tech student, I mean, other students in ASD. So I'm just curious, I'd like to learn a little bit more about how enhancing ASD, you know, enhancing that partnership could enhance more opportunities to ASD students. You know, whether that partnership can be further developed.
Yeah, that's a great question, Member Lessons. That that's something we'll keep in mind as well. King Tech is going to play a huge role in our goals moving forward, no matter what happens with the academies model.
Thank you, Member Lessons. We'll move on to board member comments. We'll start at my left. And I did want to flag, we have seven minutes remaining. Member Higgins, for yours.
I'll try to make it quick. First of all, I really do appreciate all the testimony tonight. It was a lot. It was emotional at times. But the number of kids and the and their sincere interest in the impact it's going to have in their community and the kids and schools education was meaningful, and I appreciate that. That was really good. I know we have a lot of issues with academies. I know we got the schedules, we got all that kind of stuff. I look forward to that discussion. I applaud the academies. I think that's something well received. It's just that we've got a nightmare with staffing and and a schedule and a plan going forward. And it's going to be some tough questions and issues to try to resolve it. But the commitment and the goal is there, and I appreciate that. And with that, I'll actually surprise, yes. I'll surprise you and actually stop now.
Duly noted. Member Donnelly?
I can top that. No comment tonight.
Thank you. A member Bellamy?
None, thank you.
Member Lessons?
I just, I did want to relay, I realized the moment passed too quickly earlier. It was a successful AASB meeting over this past week, about a week and a half ago. And I think all of the ASD board members who attended and was pleased to work with the organization to also use that legislative finance data as a reference point in the AASB's advocacy. So using pointing to FY eleven as as a place to work together on behalf of education.
Thank you, Member Lessons.
We did get an award at the AASB. I I I did want to say that.
Well, you are out of order, Madame Bellamy, but thank you very much. Member Wilson, member comments, please.
Busted.
It is late, so I'm just going to give a reminder that we have a communications meeting on Thursday at one thirty.
President Holloman?
I would just say that I have the plaque for that award on my dining room table, so it'll have to wait until the next meeting to actually show up in the Ed Center. Echo what Member Higgins said, really appreciate people that came out, spoke. I'm always caught by the disconnect between what folks in the community say and what a number of our legislators have had to say about school performance and whether or not we're we're accomplishing things. And and we need to get those two groups of people talking to each other more, especially during the legislative session. And of course, even inflation adjusted BSA wouldn't solve the issue we have from diminishing student numbers. That's really what's driving trying to consolidate students into buildings that we can staff better. But it certainly makes for a difficult choice. Really heard from people that that truly love their neighborhood schools and makes makes for tough decisions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, President Holloman, and I'll close by expressing appreciation for everyone who took time to come out and testify. And I was able to connect with a number of individuals at the community town halls regarding rightsizing. I know every board member was too. And so I appreciate everyone who's engaged in this process. I also wanted to thank staff for facilitating those conversations and the process thus far. Your work is appreciated and I know it's significant. And thanks to our board for facilitating a busy meeting that featured a a great amount of public testimony as well as a impactful agenda. So thank you for the teamwork that we displayed earlier. I appreciate that. That's all the comments I have. I don't see any other comments from administration, so we'll move to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Made by Member Bellamy, seconded by Member Wilson. Seeing no objection, we're adjourned at eleven thirteen PM. Thank you.